Thank you. Good evening. My name is George Morris, Vice Chairman of the Board. And at the table with me are --
John O'Connell.
Paul Hardy, I'm counsel. Jim Robinson.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
The last thing we have to do is minutes on the meeting of July 20, 2016. Has everybody read those?
And there's a proposed amendment on page three of seven at the bottom of the middle paragraph. This is kind of a clarification.
I had one other. It's so minor, I hate to point it out, but I want to prove that I've read the minutes. And it's on page five, onto the third paragraph. The third line from the bottom, I think, should read October 19 versus 20.
Yes, there was discussion of the 20th at one point, but it wasn't 19.
Got all the change comments? Elizabeth, please make a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of Wednesday, July 20, 2016, as many.
There's a motion, any second. Second. If it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the appearance of --
Do you want to do August 11?
Well, you have those also. I didn't see those.
Okay, yeah, I did some. We can defer them.
Okay, what if we defer August 11 and September 7? Let's see. 101, Newbury Fort Turnpike, Barry?
Yes, you're up first.
You're up. Is this the spot we're in?
Yes.
Any place the camera can see it, okay.
I think you should, let me double check. Should be good.
Yeah, you're kind of right on the edge if you can get a little bit closer to John.
Good evening, very full, taking well on behalf of the Department of Energy. With me is Greg Hockman from Williams &amp; Sporagas, Engineering. We were before you a month ago-ish, about two or three weeks ago, I guess. We submitted a proposed modification to you at the same time we submitted it to the Conservation Commission in early September. And with Martha's assistance, we were able to arrange for Joe Sowatka, the engineer that works with you as a peer reviewer, to look at this. He provided comments a week ago that Greg responded to and submitted a response the same day that went to the Conservation Commission last week. And at their meeting on the 12th, they voted to approve an amendment to their order of conditions approving these modifications. So what you have here is one more slightly modified version of that, which wasn't the one approved by the Conservation Commission. After a site walk, there were some questions about the retaining wall that was put in on that east side. And it was determined that it should be cut down so that it wouldn't exceed four feet in height and therefore not need engineering and building inspector approval. And so by virtue of that change, the rain and swale that's on that east side was moved a little bit to the west. The new pavement has made smaller. So a further revised stormwater analysis was conducted in order to account for that shrinking of these modifications. The modification consists of a request to, for you to modify your approval from 2012, it's been extended since, to instead of having it be with a three to one slope coming from the limited work, to allow that to remain with that wall and to extend the paving , it's all the area in the ground. So instead of being grassed and having surface runoff, it would be paved and directed to the stormwater basin, which has been enlarged on the southeast corner of the park. I don't know if you heard anything from Joe today, Martha?
I have not received anything back from him.
Could I just tweak something you said, Barry?
Sure.
In talking with Doug this afternoon, he just got this, okay? And he has not reviewed it. And our approval was based upon approval and sorting out the details. It wasn't a cart lunch for the things as they go now. Now, it looks like it's converging to an approval, but I think for the planning board's purpose, it's not quite a done deal.
What are conditions were put together yet?
Oh, well, it has been put together and submitted. The revisions.
Okay. Yes, I, with one further amendment, which I just approved, this plan, in the sense of the proposed design, these changes was approved, they had not seen this particular plan at the meeting from last week. So the vote to approve was contingent on them having this plan in their file before the issue.
Which he's got, but nobody's had a chance to look at it, Jeff.
It's not as though they were expecting further changes to what was presented to that. It was just they didn't have the plan with this particular wall height modification and the swale being moved to the west.
There was a paving issue where it went from three inches to four inches at some location?
Yeah, that's been modified. The pavement match detail's been modified to incorporate Joe Sowatka's comments. The details have been revised accordingly.
Yeah, and on that area right there?
Yes.
Okay. Not the whole area, because that's three inches. We dropped from four to three when it was first approved.
Right.
We dropped from four to three?
Yeah.
That was a good suggestion. But none of this job?
No.
No, it was on another job?
Yeah, that was for that door.
Subdivision.
Yeah, that was for that door.
So where are we here? Are we still on four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
And then, as you know --
The new subdivision ranks called for three, which is quite enough, but you're stuck with a four here.
Well, also given the heavy equipment that they're going to be parking there.
Not a bad idea, yeah. And the other thing that EPW Director at the time wanted to see for, in general.
Right, right.
So just to recap, you've got a submittal from us in early September. He came for you to increase this, introduce the idea. It was recommended that we go to the Conservation Commission first, that Joe Sowatka take a look at this and comment, which he did. And so I sent a formal request the other day to you, Martha, asking that you consider this under your site plan bylaw as a modification that would not require a public hearing, that it's a minor change to the site and to the project that you approved in 2012. I should add one thing. We did, you put on this plan, you had in front of you a detail of the --
Reseperator.
The separator that was shown. Just put it right on the front.
John, was, did the board consider this, or the commission consider this major or minor?
Well, personally, as one member of the board, I would consider it major. It's, it was expanded with no request. It was just in the pious hopes that nobody would notice. And it, the expansion is significant. That's all I can say, except that's my opinion.
The Conservation Commission has only one process. And if you're going to amend the plan, you have to go through this process with them. So they conducted a public hearing. I mean, it's, was it 800 square feet?
Yeah, so following the last conservation hearing and taking a look at Joe Sowatka's comments, lowering the wall to less than four feet resulted in approximately 800 square feet less of impervious surface. So we're able to make some positive changes following last, last week's conservation hearing. And the revised swale system and expanded stormwater basin does accommodate all the flows during the same storms that the original system was designed for. But it does have to get larger to accommodate those ravines. But there's no increase in any of the design points as a result of this proposed modification.
I would add, while I wasn't here for it, I mean, I spoke to the applicant in 2012 when you had your hearing on this site plan, there were no Butters or any members of the public that took issue or participated, to my knowledge. So it really isn't objection in the community, if you will, to the site plan, to the project. It doesn't change the use or activity.
Limited work's still the same.
Limited work is still the same.
Well, for an engineering type of change, we would normally defer to the Conservation Commission.
Well, yes, especially for the stormwater.
Yes.
And in fact, that's really what this is about, is it's a stormwater management issue. You know, the analysis that's been done shows it actually improved. And while I don't dispute what John's saying, is that it's a difference in that area than what was approved, it kind of addresses an issue that I think John might have been the one who raised it in some site walks about vehicles being in that area, it creates a surface where any kind of materials that might drip from vehicles is collected and controlled rather than infiltrating and perhaps even getting rid of that, which I don't want to speak with ConCon, but I know they sort of viewed it as an improvement over the situation as it was, as built. Not necessarily from the original plan, but better than the as-built condition with it being not paved.
I've got one question for Greg, and I've got to confess, I've been off to the ferry someplace the last few weeks. This area down around and behind the cell tower, you had a substantial reduction in the woods portion, and you seem to have exactly the same amount of gravel surface as in the original. That doesn't, I didn't look at it before, where it was immediately cleared before any filling was done, but it seems to me a lot of fill was placed back there.
Not really. I mean, it was leveled out a little bit.
On me?
It was leveled out a little bit.
Yeah.
The Hancock Plan that was prepared and ultimately reviewed by Mr. Sowatka, who showed the gravel area back there. There's no proposed modification.
Oh, excuse me, it showed the gravel road, access road around it. It didn't show that whole area gravel. I don't believe. Well, it looks an awful lot like what you've got right here.
It had, it had boulders placed on the 25-foot, no disturb. And it's my understanding that the intent was to allow, I think it was going to be here too. A good thing, yeah.
Are you in the original?
Yeah, this is the plan that Hancock had done. Sheet four, it's like, yeah. So it's got these boulders and silt fence proposed along the 25-foot post there.
Right.
I agree, it's not really cleared.
It doesn't exactly show any of these, I mean, the new contour was die right into the existing.
It shows no work being done back there.
What's that?
It shows no work being done back there at all.
There is no, right, exactly. And it appeared to me like work had been done. I didn't stand there watching it, but it did not look to me like that was even close to the original condition.
Right. And the other thing is that it doesn't show up on this plan, but in the NLI material, there was a small plan of bins being placed back there.
Yeah, there's a series of bins that are proposed, just to try to get a handle on some of the storage that's going on back there.
That's, that's in the document that was submitted in September.
Correct.
You had a crew out here, right?
We had a crew out, we had a crew out here, yes.
Yes, did you, did you shoot, take shots back here and compare them with what Hancock had done?
No, we haven't completed the as-built portion back here yet.
Yeah.
But we, we did go back here and walk, and a lot of the weapon flags are still in.
Oh, yeah.
And you can see that the 25-foot, for the most part, has been maintained in substantial compliance with, with what's shown on this plan.
Yeah.
This plan does show erosion controls and boulders being placed 25 feet on center in this area, which I think gives the impression that this area was allowed to be utilized to some extent within the boulders, but not beyond the boulders. I wasn't part of this permitting process, but looking at this plan, even though this said proposed gravel access drive, this would tell me that it was understood that there was going to be some, some work done back here, the fact that there's boulders placed and erosion controls proposed. Otherwise, they would have hugged the proposed gravel access drive.
And when you say work, you know, I don't, in terms of what work was done there was to place those limits, but in terms of grading or filling or anything like that, I'm not sure.
Well, the way I would tell, there's probably others, but if we're looking out here at original contours, and up here we see the new contours, which are heavy as opposed to light dotted. These would typically die into the existing if no work was planned. And that is exactly what they seem to do. If work was planned, then you'd see the heavy lines out here on the original.
Yeah, there was no proposed grading back here.
Right.
And from what we can tell, there was, there was minor grading done as a result of the creation of the access.
Well, I'm not looking at the nitpick, I'm just looking to see, that's a substantial area out here, and, do you have the field work done or, at this point, or have you not yet done the field work there for an as-built condition?
Field work's not complete.
Okay. In this area, it's not complete?
It's not complete. The goal was going to be to try to get this paved, try to get the wood and the separated done this season, once this was done, complete the as-built in preparation of a certificate of compliance request to the commission.
But it was walked to verify that limit with the weapon flags, and in order to visualize the placement of the bins, which is shown on the drawing that's in this September file. At that grade, without any change compared. I should add, remind you, one other change, if you can focus back to the other one. It's minor, but it's notable, is that in this area, right here, you see that retaining wall in front of the entrance to the cell tower.
Yeah.
That was cut back in order to be able to give them access to the cell tower, which is drawn on the original plan, which would have blocked. So if you see a new contour here, a 22-foot contour, that's to make it clear that that's where they can not drop off, drive in. That's minor, but just that's what that's about there.
We understand that.
Yeah, we found a few minor areas in the original site plan that I think were just tight, except for overlooked. That was one of the major ones. And one thing this does too, is it allows additional area for snow storage, rather than just pushing it down into the resource area, which I think a lot of the commission members in the paper.
There were some issues. Some people had issues with that.
Right, so that was actually one. So where are you planning, snow storage, it's in the, in the swale area?
Yeah, it would be pushed to the curve in the swale, the snow melts, any sediment would get trapped in the swale. There's an operation and maintenance plan for the swale, as well as the basin, so that would be cleaned regularly as needed. But the big improvement was this catch basin and the other brick separator, hopefully catch a lot of the, if anything was to drip.
Okay, John?
Well, I mean, you asked, I have an opinion. I am not the planning board. I voted, I know.
So if we pull the board for major or minor, how would you vote?
If you're what?
If we pull the board for major or minor, how would you vote?
Yeah, I vote major, yeah.
Jeff?
I'd vote major only because I agree with John.
Well, you don't have to, Elizabeth.
I would vote major, in large part because I defer to John's expertise in this area.
All of our engineering skill, I'd vote major also.
Could I just make one more comment?
Sure.
If this was found to be major, what would be the difference? I mean, there's a peer review consultant engaged right now that's reviewing this. We're going to comply with whatever he's asked us to comply with. Is it just the actual process going through?
The gentleman before you is responsible, to determine whether it's major or minor. If you could defer to the Conservation Commission, we can make the determination here, obviously. So the next point would be a public hearing, which would be, what, in the following months?
The earliest, it could be, would be a month, just because of the notification requirements.
Martha, that would be the actual difference between the major and minor determination, right? Is there a requirement for the public hearing?
Right.
That's what your question is.
Now, what does that do to schedule? You're not going to pay this fall, Greg, right?
I don't know. It's not likely that we're going to get all of this written before the end of the year.
Yeah, it didn't seem to be like that. That's in the cards. You had concerns about lead time or the reseperator?
I mean, you know, as I say, there was nobody who showed up four years ago, likely to be known from the area showing up this time, but if you feel that you want to put notice out and have a hearing on it and take your action, it's --
Take care of it that time.
And we do have one.
Take care of the plan at that time.
We have one Butter there now. He wasn't there four years ago.
You want to set a date now?
None of those guys are going to show up.
I don't think you can set a date right now until you have the application in front of you.
You have the application in front of you.
There's an application.
Well, it's, we have, we have a request.
What would be different about that? I mean, you know, I don't want, I'd like to not object to everything, but I'd have to turn this into a complicated process, given how much material we already --
I think it's, it's likely an extension of the difference. You're not continuing, continuing it to a date, because you do need to do the public notice. You could certainly identify the date for which the public notice would be discussed.
I guess I would think the issue with, what more would we have to submit in order to start the process?
What do you want? Want to review this quickly? It's an application, it worked.
Well, that letter on the cover, you submitted it.
I mean, I, George, I would need to take a look at the, the bylaw requirements and see what is necessary for the submittal of a site plan review.
Right, I mean, if it needs, if it needs to be, if the modification needs to be in the same form as the original modification, then, you know, we don't have that. We've got a letter requesting approval of it.
And I think that, you know, is to a certain extent, you know, where your decision is going to be, in determining whether it's major or minor, is whether you think you need the full submittal and review of the plans and all the materials that come along with it.
That's a good point. John, I would throw that back out to you.
What's that?
I don't know if you heard what Paul just said, but he, I interpreted Paul's, what Paul just said, as advising that maybe a way to interpret major versus minor is whether we would actually need a full submittal in order to render our decision.
Do we not have a full submittal, basically, at this point?
I, I would need to take a look at the requirements, what is necessary for a submittal, I guess, because it's short.
It probably doesn't have all the bells and whistles.
There's generally a lot of information that's necessary to be submitted along with the site plan review application. Whether or not that's necessary to really review what's being requested here is probably not the case. So I don't think you're going to need, you know, a full application, but at minimum, you know, if, if you're determining that this is a major modification that requires a public hearing, they're going to have to submit something and then request waivers of all the other submittal requirements. Because you have submittal requirements in the bylaw for a site plan review.
Right.
So if they're not going to comply with them, but you're going to force them to go through that public hearing process, there needs to be some mechanism for stating that whatever they're submitting is sufficient.
So it'd be an application and acceptance of waivers.
If I may, I read the bylaw. It talks in the section about modifications. There's one paragraph that said the Pine Gorge should determine if the request for modifications is significant enough to require a public hearing or minor enough to not. It doesn't say resubmit the entire original site plan application. It just says public hearing on the modification. We have submitted a complete request for your approval for this modification. My view would be that if you think it's significant enough to hold a public hearing on this, we've started the process. I respectfully suggest that it would be unreasonable to ask that we file a brand-new site plan application and then ask for a waiver of 99% of it and only ask you to review this point of decision.
I agree. I would agree with that. I don't see anything required under, other than this and the, obviously, we have the original. Unfortunately, they're, they're on different scales, ones, I mean, the 40 is more appropriate than the 20 they had before, but it's a little hard to overlay things. But I don't think there's any point in making a dog and pony show out of this. I think it's just a question of this and the stormwater cals and anything else that goes with those. There was several letters that came back and forth. I don't see anything to be gained by making, going beyond that, personally.
That your decision should reflect that determination.
And it also allows, and I can see the benefit of if you're going to give notice to the Butters and the public for a public hearing, it also allows Joe Sowatka to file his final comments on this response, if you will, to his earlier comments. And then that'll be in the record and available for people to review. So I think that, there's a benefit to having a public hearing on this, I just don't see a benefit to going to --
It's going to all be included within the circuit, right?
Ultimately.
Right. So can we set a date now, roughly?
Well, there's a certain amount of time for public notice, right?
Yes.
So we would go, who would get the certified Butters list at this point?
You all.
We would get that, we'd send, we'd send out the notice, we publish in the paper.
Right.
That's going to go through a period of time, like three weeks typically, get all that done.
Yeah, and usually, usually it needs to be a month from whenever the date is.
Right, so you're going to have a meeting in November, and so I think, once we get our public notice out there, if you direct us and authorize us to do that based on what we've already submitted, we're going to be here either in November or early December, once the notice has occurred.
Mr. Chairman, so my concern here is that you have submittal requirements that go along with your site plan review bylaw, okay? There's been no public notice for what's been here tonight, so you can't continue this hearing to another night, because there really is no actual formal public hearing, it's ongoing.
Right.
Okay, so you need something then to trigger that public hearing process. And I don't think you can do it through simply a determination that it is a major modification. There needs to be some sort of an application process that triggers the notice requirement and that kicks off your hearing process. And to the extent that that is the case, you have submittal requirements as part of your bylaw. So, and I don't think it's a problem for you to say that as part of our determination that we are finding it to be a major modification, that we are waiving all of those submittal requirements other than materials that have already been submitted, you know, as part of this request. But I think you need to do that in order to actually get this procedurally in the right posture.
Okay, so that we're accepting the plan and other materials?
As, as sufficient and any other requirements for submittal are waived.
Can we vote on that tonight?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Oh, I knew you were going to do that.
So Paul, are we accepting this as an application or no?
So what you're doing is you're making me finding that what has been submitted constitutes a major modification necessitating a public hearing, that you are waiving any submittal requirements for a site plan review submittal that go beyond what has already been submitted.
Can I second that and be done with you?
What he said. Okay, I move to that this board finds that the proposal submitted constitutes a major modification requiring a public hearing, but this board will waive any of the remaining submittal requirements that may exist beyond what currently has been submitted in this before this board.
Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Done.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
So we will follow up with Martha, because the public notice process started, and then figure out when that has occurred, what meeting on your board, what could be right meeting right here. Paul, we have to get a game for that, so can I just?
That does find its way in.
What are you meeting at November and December?
Well, we're meeting November...
That's all yours, John.
November 2nd and then November 16th.
2nd is probably too early.
Yeah, 2nd will be too early, and I'm actually going to be away for the next week, so I won't be able to do, you know...
Yeah, what do you got in December?
December 7th. December 7th and then the 21st, which is right before Christmas.
I think we should put 7. Come out of town on the 24th, and I think if that's one... if that's your scheduled meeting, we have ample time to get notice out, reglish, and have that process run. So please, when we talk, let's use that as a...
So does the board want to make a motion to accept the public hearing? They're not agreed? 7th, December 7th.
We should use that date as the date that provides in the public notice as when this hearing would be held.
I move that the board accept the aforementioned public hearing for December 7, 2016, at 7:00.
That's a forward motion.
Second, second. Are you all in favor?
Aye.
You close? I got an 18 here and a 13 there.
Very good. Thank you very much.
That speaks towards a debate considerable fill.
I think I'm reading it wrong. Could you again?
Thank you.
A little late. A special permit application of Borrego Solar Systems.
Steve Wong from Borrego, and the first thing I want to ask, and that's Paul, John's not here.
John is not here.
He'd be a voting member.
Yes, he will.
I know there's a procedure for missing a meeting that you can take the mulligan.
It's actually a mulligan. It's not the mulligan rule.
Kind of the same thing, but the mulligan rule. So I don't know if that's... you can do that, and that's what I'm asking.
So John has not yet missed a hearing?
That's correct.
I understand, so he would be able to do that. The problem is, you now have four out of your five members who have missed at least one hearing, and if they miss another hearing, they are no longer eligible to vote, because you can only miss one meeting under the mulligan rule. And as you know, because this is a special permit application, you need a supermajority vote. So you need four out of five. So if you lose one member, you need a unanimous decision. If you lose a second member, there is no way this board can actually approve the project. So I'm asking you whether or not it makes sense for you to continue to move forward on this application based upon that, or whether it makes more sense to withdraw without prejudice, wait until you've got all of your ducks lined up, refiled, and move forward with a full complement of board members without any missed hearings?
I think we want to keep going.
Somebody's going to take a life insurance policy out of me then, right?
So I... and I'm not suggesting yet that the board has determined whether or not they are willing to grant another extension after tonight, but I just wanted to raise that concern, because I certainly wouldn't want anybody to go through this process and get another two months, three months, four months, only to find that there's... you're in a situation where the board can't even approve the project if they wanted to. And then you would have to start over four months later, six months later, whenever we got there.
Well, I think if John's available, he can take the mulligan rule.
He can.
And we present tonight. I mean, then we can continue on. So is it... sorry. Is it we withdraw and we resubmit tomorrow?
What are you doing, KB?
Do we withdraw today and then you're just resubmit tomorrow essentially to...
You would withdraw and resubmit when you are ready to resubmit. I don't know that it would be tomorrow. I guess one question is where are you, and I think that you'd be prepared to inform the board with regard to that issue, but are you ready to proceed fully right now? Or is there... you know, information, my understanding is that DEP, you know, is still an unresolved issue.
Yeah, I mean, we can only go as far as what we can...
Correct. So my question is, if you wanted to withdraw without prejudice, you could then refile whenever you've resolved your DEP issue, knowing that at that point you're ready to move forward fully.
Is something continuing?
It's not a continuance. It would be...
No, but is it... oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
It would be withdrawing without prejudice.
Redown one, yeah.
If they withdraw without prejudice, that would allow them to come back without having to wait the two-year period. And then the board would regain a full complement of voting rights. It would require a renotice and a new application. The board can discuss whether or not it'd be willing to waive application fees or anything along that line, but you would certainly have to renotice all of the neighbors, and you would have to re-present, you know, the pertinent information. I think that you could incorporate by reference.
And con...
Well, no, this is a separate process from coming out.
Well, there's got to be some representation anyway, because it's a different project.
Well, not even because it's a different project. We are so far down the line and have not really had any substantive information presented to the board in so long. I think one way or the other, you need to do some representation and refamiliarize everybody, you know, with the particulars of the project.
I think last time you asked us...
I was not at the last hearing.
But the board wanted to find out how we were... How we're stepping out of here here tonight, not even present the whole project, but just let's say, okay, KB's taking over and who he's hired to take care of DEP and how we can handle this.
And that's...
And I know each of us, we need to give updates.
To present that. The question is again, so you'll be presenting substantive information that John will have missed, so he has to use his mulligan rule exemption and watch the tape, refamiliarize himself with what happened tonight, and then he remains an eligible voting member unless he misses another hearing.
Correct. That could happen anytime.
Yes, but usually you're not in a position where you've got four out of the five members.
It could happen to anyone with the four. It doesn't matter which one.
Correct. It doesn't have to be John that misses another one.
If it happens to anybody except me.
Any two members leaves you in a position where...
So let's say three members show up and then you're like, I'll continue to the next one if there's not a big vote.
But if they were not...
But it's not just...
To continue it.
What's happening?
Well, for instance, if a member has a health issue and simply has to resign from the board, a member moves out of town. I mean, I've seen it happen many times.
It's happened with... yeah, it's happened with this project.
Right. And we now have two members who will have missed one.
You already have an alternate who's missed two, so he's...
He's out.
He's gone, yeah, he's out.
And if any of those four misses the second one.
This has been going on for well over a year, and it's been a war of attrition, and I just want to make sure you understand that it can only get worse from here, and you're better off having a full complement of voting members. It's my position. You'll have your position. The board will have its position. This is just my recommendation.
Paul, taking your recommendation into consideration, is it something that they need to decide tonight when they present and give the board an update, and by doing that, that doesn't preclude them from tomorrow deciding to withdraw with prejudice, does it?
Well, yes and no. There's two aspects here. They have the right to request, you know, the rights to withdraw without prejudice, but they're also, by the end of this hearing tonight, going to ask for another continuance, because they are not prepared to complete their process. And then that's on this board as to whether or not it wants to grant that continuance. So you are going to have to make a decision at the end of the night whether or not you're content with another continuance request. So that will have to be resolved before we get to whether they want to change their mind tomorrow morning. So I just wanted to get the issue on the floor.
Are there specific criteria by which you value whether or not we grant a continuation?
Well, there have been numerous continuations that have been granted on this project, and there has been some pretty significant opposition from the neighborhood with regard to those continuances, but the board has been very indulgent, understanding, you know, that there were some difficulties with this process that are somewhat out of the applicant's control, because you've got the DEP process going on, and they certainly took far longer than they should have in making their determination. There's been some other things that are a little bit more within the applicant's control in terms of, you know, their willingness to proceed based upon availability of ASARX and that sort of thing that I understand is partially out of their control, but partially within their control. So the process has gone on... I mean, I can't speak for the board in terms of their history, but I'm guessing it's far from the norm at this point. So at some point, you know, the board needs to clear this dock, if you will, and finish this process or push it fully aside and let it come back when it's ready to move. That's the chairman.
Well, frankly, the way that we are with possible attrition, the board members cutting it down below where that we can make a vote, and DEP has really not produced anything for you, because it could take months, not just a few weeks. It could take many, much more time. They already have taken their time. Now, KB, have you talked with them at all?
I have talked with DEP, yeah.
Do you have a sense of what their timeframe is?
You've probably spoken to them, you know, a lot more than I have.
We've spoken with DEP and that the plan is to get them a new submittal early December, at which point they won't... they have 45 days to review. Prior to the... prior to the review process, the intention is to meet with them with a draft product to essentially review, you know, both remaining issues that they might find prior to submission to be sure that that is the last and final submission.
Are you ready to meet with them at this point?
Yeah.
You are?
We are.
And have you asked to meet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have. They are... the point at which they will... they will meet is once we have all of the designs essentially in place when we're at a 90%, and we are... we're not at the 90% yet, but we're... we have approached them to schedule a meeting, in which case their opinion has been they wanted to wait till we're at a more complete position prior to their meeting.
Okay. So the answer is you're really not quite ready at this point. You're close.
From their standpoint, we've been trying to schedule something for that.
From your standpoint, you are. From their standpoint, I think they make the rules, right?
Well, but this is not really a rule issue. This is more...
No, I mean, but they get to win all the arguments.
No question.
Yeah.
But part of their hesitation for meeting is simply that because of the abutter process and the abutters have notified DEP that they want to be present at these meetings, which is entirely in their rights and no issue with that at all, they're being very... they're being very careful about how that process goes along. So that thus the recommendation to approach them once we're at essentially a 90% product, which we're very close.
So that'll be a couple of weeks from now. Then the 45 days start.
That's correct.
And now you're into late January.
That's exactly right.
And they have 45 days. What if they don't do it within 45 days?
It's automatically granted. It's automatically granted.
It's an automatic approval. Okay.
So our plan was to... and this is a little bit of a cart in front of the horse here, but our plan is to present to you essentially at the same time we get in front of... we get in front of DEP in early December. So our plan was to present to you our project progress and the draft designs to provide you and the abutters an opportunity for input, to again, just be sure we've addressed all final issues.
Were you going to do that tonight?
No, next meeting. Yep. So no, this evening was basically to present to you the project progress, considering that the board had some substantial concerns regarding the activity or perceived lack of activity on the project. There really has been a lot of...
Well, it definitely has a long beard, as it's way beyond the risk.
Yeah, and that's the point of this evening, was to share with you the project activity.
Excuse me. Rob, could you introduce yourself?
Sure. Sorry. Carter, in front of the horse, yeah. My name's Robert Rosine, so I've been hired by KB to work with Borrego Solar to work, to help address the DEP comments for both water quality and habitat concerns.
You just have to consider the risk or the reward of this right now, because they're running okay, but getting closer to board, having people not be able to vote, the risk line is going up, so I really want you to consider this as a suggestion.
So I ask the question is, by withdrawing, that it mean... what are the potential issues in terms of resubmittal?
No, well, you would go through your process to finish up with DEP, even if you withdraw without prejudice, then you can come back in. That's put to bed, because this whole time, we've been waiting for something to come out of DPE, and there's a promise and a wish and a hope, and they haven't been fulfilled. So I think if you can beat DEP down and get it done, do it in conjunction with people from the neighborhood, get it completed, refiled, we'll go from there.
So as far as refiling, I mean, we filed a ton of stuff. We have to put that package together.
Most of it's in the record already. There would have to be at least a briefing up and a summary of what's going on.
I don't know. I guess I'll ask Paul. It's... we have to be... It's kind of like the last project. We have to resubmit. I mean, there's been a lot submitted on this already, and there's an application of basically only three pages you fill out and then FEE associated with that, but there's been a ton of stuff submitted with this.
And I think it would be appropriate to incorporate that by reference, perhaps prepare a list of all the materials that have been submitted through the course of this process, note that they're in the record for the original application file, and you can cross-reference. I think it's pretty wasteful to submit all the material. Again, it's already in the public record, accessible, you know, in the town office, so...
Does this have to be decided at a planning board meeting, or can you go home and talk to your leaders and then get back to the chair or get back to my...
It has to be decided at a planning board. They could certainly leave right here tomorrow. They could file a request to withdraw without prejudice. You would have to wait until your next hearing to act on that request.
We couldn't act unless we're here, okay, in a meeting. I understand.
But they didn't request it until they want to.
Okay, because it's maybe a little unfair to him to ask it. Maybe about his pay grade. You'd be sure as hell about mine in a situation like this, if I were his position.
Okay. So here's a question is, I don't know if there's any things before the board to change the bylaw at this point that would affect this project, because if we withdraw, then we're... we have to adhere to the current bylaw when we submit. Right now, we're going by what bylaw was when we submitted, so that's one thing for us to consider, and I ask you, is there...
There's nothing contemplated right now. Next town meetings in May, I don't think, but maybe something will be done by this company.
The next time something could be changed on the bylaw would be May.
Yes.
But associated members would be...
Theoretically, it could be a special town meeting sometime before that. That being said, your rights are not protected in your application until you've actually... from a zoning change, until you've actually received a special permit. So if you continue this process out ad nauseam and don't have your special permit before there's a zoning change, you're not protected anyways.
Sure.
George?
Just make one comment. So as far as the abutters... Yeah, Greg Marshall. Greg Marshall, so it's part of the drive. You know, you mentioned the process going on for a year. I believe it's close to a year with the board here, right? But for the abutters, it's been, I don't know, 27, 28 months. And you've granted all these continuances, and we were told back earlier this year, you got one more shot at this, and, you know, you almost drove it to a vote, didn't happen. Okay, we'll be ready in July. We'll be ready in October. I mean, I really do think, you know, we got to do something. Can we have a vote? I think they've had plenty of time.
Not tonight, and as a practical matter, all this hope and hoping to have a vote is based upon DEP coming up with an answer, and that's still an open question. You folks brought the appeal against the ConCon, which you have every right to do, and you can't stop that and say you were wrong to do it, but you have to live through this process with DPE.
We weren't wrong to do it.
Pardon?
We weren't wrong to do it.
Oh, no, I didn't say you were. Not at all. But you have to live through the process. You can't suddenly say, well, gee, we just want to have a vote and get it over with without DEP coming in with a supplemental order. order.
They haven't provided, they haven't provided everything to the DEP, so you can't throw it all on the DEP.
Early on, but I think the engineer, the new engineer is going to try to push it through, correct?
That's correct. We've been in consultation with DEP, and they're, they're not prepared to give, and they, they understand that the, the request for information is, is in process, and, and that is the process, and it, it, it's entirely conceivable, necessarily not hopeful, but it's entirely conceivable that there could be a request for information, three, it would not be unheard of that DEP is as careful and thorough about their process, and, and they are less concerned about the time duration than they are just about the fact that it's thorough and complete and...
It's essentially, you know, accurate.
The word on the street is, it's also deliberate because of budget time. They want somebody to get on the horn and call them, our senator, at which point he will be screaming at them, and they will say, well, we don't have any money. And they get one, you're ready.
Can I have a question about submittal? If the...
Alicia, get the...
Oh, sorry, Alicia, we've got to, we've got to go. If they do choose to withdraw this application, I don't know if she will respond to you, if they choose to withdraw the application and then resubmit again, would it be considered the same project? Or is it considered a separate project, a new, a new project?
It's considered a new application.
Okay.
And the process has begun anew. There's, there's a substantial amount of information that's already in possession of the town staff, it's in the record. You can incorporate that by reference, I don't see the need to actually resubmit, and that goes not only for the applicant, but for the neighbors as well. You people have submitted a significant amount of information, and you shouldn't be required to resubmit all of that as well.
Okay, so if, if it's a separate project, would the...
It's a separate application, it's the same project.
Okay, if it's separate, well, we don't know that because...
Well, we don't actually, because the DEP process could result in a substantially different project than what is currently before this board.
So if that happens, and the DEP shrinks the project, um, I guess I'm kind of talking through it, I'm kind of answering my own question. If the DEP has two choices, they can either issue a superseding order of conditions, or they can deny, correct?
Correct. Or, or they can uphold the issuance of the order of conditions.
Or they can, right.
That, that would be the denial of your appeal, would uphold the ConCon's determination.
Okay, so if, if it's denied, what happens to their, to their project? So now they have to go before the ConCon again with a separate project, because they have a new application?
No, wait, so you mean if they issue a superseding order of conditions?
Right. No, no, if they deny, if the, if the...
Well, no, so if they, they have two options, they can either uphold the decision of the Conservation Commission for the issuance of the order of conditions, or they can issue a superseding order of conditions. That superseding order of conditions could change the project in some way, it could say, you know, you don't comply with this requirement, therefore you need to make these changes.
Okay, so there won't be a denial from that?
Well, or, or they could say that there is no way to condition this project, but then it would be a denial, superseding order of conditions, it will still be a superseding order of conditions, it just is going to be one that would deny the...
So I guess my question is, is there, is there any requirement, if they submit another application, even though they use the same stuff, that would trigger it to have to go before the ConCon again, kind of like what we did up?
Not as a part of this process. If there were something, for instance, if they come in, because DEP says, we have these additional concerns, right? So they come in with significantly revised plans, and DEP says, this is really different than anything the Conservation Commission has ever reviewed, we think a remand back to the commission is appropriate. Theoretically, that could happen, I wouldn't think it would be very likely, I think that once it's in front of them, they're probably just going to keep hold of it and do whatever they're going to do.
Okay.
But it is theoretically possible. But this project, this process can never result in them having to do something else at Conservation Commission, completely separate.
Okay.
Tracy Peter, Peter Environmental, representing the abutters, I just have a question for the new engineer. I was just wondering if there's a, are you having Lucas Environmental and Max Weisberg, or is there any kind of coordinated review with the wildlife habitat? Because one is working with the upland habitat, and the other, Lucas is working with the wetlands. And I, I just was wondering how that would work.
Sure. Sure. We have contracted with Lucas Environmental, and at this, at this point, we have not connected with wetland strategies and solutions, but the, but the plan is to do that. So we will be, we're working through their, their review as part of that process, and we, and we plan to connect with them. But I would say that Lucas Environmental's review is not limited to wetlands, their, their review is also for critical terrestrial habitat, and, and we're working with them in, in identifying strategies, particularly in the long-term operations and maintenance for the project, for strategies that would both protect upland habitat and, and protect for the potential of fertile pools, recognizing that there, that there's the potential for fertile pools out there.
Anybody else? Okay, the question is, do you want to withdraw without prejudice or for the continuance?
I would just like to add just one, one more thing, if you don't mind, before we get to that. This is a little bit just in, in defense of DEP, or even just to explain a little bit in the process of what's happening with them. DEP isn't, isn't necessarily dragging their feet in this process, you may or may not be aware of, in fact, DEP has draft rules for how they are permitting and reviewing solar arrays now, they have not been released to the public, but this project is, is essentially going through that process, and, which is, which is fine, no, no issue with that, but this project is being held to a higher standard, this, this solar array project, the permitting project, is being held to a higher standard than have solar array projects in the past. So that really is the crux of what we are, of what we're dealing with, and that's fine, and KB is entirely prepared to, to, to deal with that, and we're confident we can deal with that. It's just the process is, is, is more thorough, more detailed, and, and less the additional time required in that, is, if you've had the pleasure of reading the RFI too, you'll, you'll know a lot of that.
So gentlemen, what do you like to do? Do you want to talk about it, do you want to go forward?
We're going to withdraw. You got questions?
You're going to withdraw?
Yeah. So, shoot, is there something we have to fill out, or is it...
Yes.
Written request, right.
Yeah, written, written request is good, but I think the, the board can accept the oral request and vote on it.
Yeah, so we'll do the withdrawal now, get DEP answer, come back to resubmit.
So my presence here is no longer required, you can cancel that, like insurance policy.
Come on, John, I can sign up for another five more cases.
So the applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. I got exactly twice as many boards as I can handle.
To accept the applicant's withdraw oral application to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Yeah.
Oh, second, sure, I'm sorry, I thought you said...
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed too quick. Thank you for your time.
So now the next step we need, we'll like to get letters from that again, is that over here?
Yep, so it would be a duly noticed public hearing, because this has not been continued to a date certain, you are all going to have to get certified mail notice, as of whenever the next hearing will be. You get to start.
About the final...
The teenager needs to be told to...
For them to drop. Doesn't...
I'm moving, I'm moving, hello, is the public here?
I got a second.
Second, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe for this? No, it doesn't... Especially if you're here. Thank you for your...
See you tomorrow night. I'm going to go in. Quite honestly, I have entirely too much... The Emmett's Board, they're planning, they're always not planning for it now. I can't. So... Oh, no, I'm not leaving, I've got several things, I'm not going to walk out. Irresponsible as I am, I'm not that guy. That took a bit of time.
It was actually shorter than I had just said.
Gosh. It's very detailed, Philadelphia, is that another problem, really, of our people being here?
Yes.
This, this area here?
No, this is about the majority we have to handle.
It's not a supermajority, but, it's not a supermajority, but because Elizabeth has to accuse herself, we're down a floor.
Right. So this, this, not being a special permit, subdivisions are not a, not a supermajority. The same principle applies, except it's not quite so severe.
And John will be able to...
Presumably. So if we took a vote, then we'd vote, and you'd contact him after we saw the area, and get his vote?
No, I think, yeah, the board can...
Very well. Adam, is it all set? Ready to open your hearings? Yeah, move the vote in the public hearing. Well, that's...
Sorry.
I moved the vote to the public hearing.
And prior to the initiation of the hearing, because I am the director of water at 257 High Road, I am reducing myself from the discussion in any voting, any substantive voting that takes place.
One thing I forgot to bring, since we did create a Boston, I forgot to bring the notice.
The notice?
Thank you very much. Thank you. John Weiss can watch the video.
We have a reading of the...
Town of Newbury, here, here. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, October 5th, 2016, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Office's 12th Chapter, Byfield, Mass. 01922. Consider the application of Adam Chase True Real Estate Development LLC, 6 Payson Street, Newbury Port, Mass., 01950. For approval of a definitive subdivision plan as shown on the plan entitled, definitive subdivision in Newbury, Mass. at 255 High Road, dated September 7th, 2016, and prepared by the Moran Cameron Group, Inc. The proposed subdivision consists of three lots and approximately 15.2 acres of land located at 255 High Road, Perrin Route 1A. Assessors map R27 Lot 64, owned by Adam Chase True Real Estate Development LLC. Copies of the plan and application are on file with the town clerk and the planning office, co-account Wey, Sweden 101, Byfield, Mass., and are available for review during regular business hours. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the definitive subdivision plan application should appear at the time and place designated above. John Weiss, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
And you want?
I'm sorry, we should note that it was continued from the last time due to insufficient memory.
Right. So you can hold that, please.
Good evening, for the record, my name is John Moran, I work for the Moran Cameron Group. We're here tonight representing Adam Chase True Real Estate Development LLC for a definitive subdivision for the property located at 255 High Road. Mr. Truce here tonight as well. So what we've submitted is a definitive subdivision plan, existing property is located in the residential agricultural district, as stated in the legal ad, it's approximately thirteen acres. We're looking at subdividing it into three lots. In this zoning district, it's a 40,000 square foot lot and 125 feet of frontage. I'll just run through, actually, before I even get into that, we did get comments back from the fire chief today, so we will be submitting revised plans, obviously, you haven't had a chance to review them. As part of my presentation, I'll go over what was changed, we actually were able to incorporate the plans, all the revisions into the plans tonight, but we do have revised information that I would like to drop off, but again, obviously, you haven't had a chance to review it. There's actually four full-size copies of the plans and the response, and then there's six reduced.
Okay.
So...
And have you submitted that to Joe Suwodka?
No, one of the full-size copies is for him, one of the full-size copies that's there.
Thank you.
And all the electronic copies are on the Dropbox as well. So again, we're in the residential agricultural district, and what I'll do is go over the lot developments, the lot sizes first. We're all compliant lots. Existing conditions planned, since I've got it up, I'll just cover that. On the site currently, there's an existing single-family dwelling, a detached barn, those are actually going to remain on one of the newly created lots. So again, currently, it's one lot with a structure on it, and we're proposing to add two additional lots. So we're looking at a 40-foot wide right-of-way, one of the changes was, that the fire chief had requested was the increase in the size of the cul-de-sac. That's been incorporated into the plan, it's now a 70-foot radius, 140-foot diameter cul-de-sac. So, again, three lots, Lot 1 would have the existing dwelling and the detached barn, that lot's about 40,400 square feet, it's got over 200 feet of frontage on the newly proposed roadway, it has over 125 feet of frontage on High Road, so it meets the requirements. Lot 2 is about 40,700 square feet, has 332 feet of frontage on the newly created road, and Lot 3 is 464,000 square feet of the remaining track of land. Its frontage is about 586 feet, it actually has this long tail that runs down along the cul-de-sac, or along the right-of-way, so this would all be frontages associated with Lot 3. But the second sheet shows, you know, the remainder of Lot 3 as it tails off to the back of the property. Either our wetland resource area is located at the rear of the property, there is no work within 100 feet for the construction of the roadway, and there won't be any work within 100 feet for the proposed development of the lot as well. What we are proposing is several waivers from your subdivision regulations, and I'll go through those in a minute. We are proposing a gravel road, and the reason for that is, is to try to maintain the characteristics of the neighborhood that's out there currently. Proposing a paved roadway wouldn't be in kind with what else is going on out in this neighborhood. Unfortunately, this came in a little late, your prior regulations actually allowed gravel roads, however, that was recently changed, so that's why we've got the waiver request. In speaking with the fire chief, other than changing the radius size and increasing the width of the roadway within that cul-de-sac, he did not have any issues with the proposed gravel road.
Is the cul-de-sac now in compliance with the subdivision rules? Well, certainly, he is cutting into what's available there.
Sure.
And.
Either way, you can be cutting the driveway into, into the amount of hay, you know, whether it's on the right side or left.
Hey, you'd like to see it down the middle?
No, I'd like to see it on the north side.
Oh, you want it over here?
Right.
Okay.
And I think, John, that once you come to see the property, you'll have a better understanding of, of our pers, our perspective.
During the smaller storm event, you haven't get any runoff from the site anyway because the sod is so good. So what we've done is we've just kind of burped up that backside, created a post spillway, and that's how we're meeting the stormwater standards.
You wanted this one to be sort of showing where we sit. This is Jack Trugler's plan, sort of showing the way that the road was before this changed.
Yeah, I'd actually say the way it was before, it was still coming close to the house.
Right, yeah, and I'd like to change that, I was just expressing concern. It's literally just, I just saw it five minutes ago.
Well, what happened is by increasing that cul-de-sac, it pushes, you start eating into lot two, so to keep that lot area compliant, you have to push the cul-de-sac back towards the north, which is what pinches this down. So that's the big issue, you know. Our original design, we tried to maintain the same look where you kind of come along, you get into the cul-de-sac, but to keep going out back, it's just a straight shot out and around. But again, unfortunately, getting that cul-de-sac width what the fire chief would like, it just pushes everything to the north.
But as a projectal matter, if the road is where it is, it's going to affect hating. If it's further up to the north, it's going to affect hating.
We're trying to keep the field as big as we can, but we're at the dead end limit too. But we weren't before with that shown, but if, if, if there can be a waiver so we can push the circle and add the road a little more, we'd be then able to get, gather more lot area and things like that and not be so close to the lot line.
I think we'll have to give some thought to that, because either that, if you can't switch the road at the other side, it's going to come up something.
Now, are you talking which?
I'm talking about the road that's going out back, the driveway.
Yeah, you're talking about the driveway.
Yeah.
See, I think you're talking about the driveway.
I'm talking about the driveway.
He's talking about the driveway. He wants, he was like, the driveway pushed.
The driveway is 25 feet from the lot line at its closest point.
Yes, exactly. And again, that's the reason.
That was, we weren't really, that's not against regulations during, is it?
And we're trying to heavily landscape this to minimize impacts to that house, exactly.
All I'm saying is it may not be against regulations, but also since it might really affect your hating, no matter where that driveway is, probably it could be moved up some.
The guy that has to cut it.
No, mostly we want to preserve the look of our lot to be as wide as it can so that the driveway is off to the far side, so we don't have to hay one side and go hay more aesthetically.
Yeah, because right now, the way it's designed, you wouldn't do anything now. You wouldn't, I mean, again, this is all drainage anyway, so they wouldn't be hating this anymore, that would be gone. This would be heavily landscaped, and then all the hanging activity would just escape the system right on that backside.
How far were the landscaped along the road?
What we've proposed is as soon as you come off the cul-de-sac, you've got to heavy settle landscaping here to cover the headlights as you're coming in. Once you turn the corner again, the driveway is being oriented so that you're actually pointing away from the house, so you're not driving towards it. And then as you turn the corner to make this bend, we're beyond the house so that the headlights wouldn't be going into the house, and then we're landscaping that closest point again. So that, where the driveway is closest to the lot line, we're landscaping those locations.
That point doesn't go up far enough to cover lights coming out, coming out from the house. I'm just looking at the house in relation to the roadway.
Oh, coming from, as you're coming back down.
Coming back down.
Well, this is all wooded right in here. So as you come this, around this corner, this is all wooded. And then as you come around this corner, you're pointing out this way now, so you're not pointing at the house.
I have a question to George's point, but again, why can't you come off in here in the middle of the north?
Well, because you're right up against the berm, so the driveway is on the, you know, you'd be trying to put the driveway top that berm, that berm's only about eight feet wide.
I guess the question is though, why couldn't the driveway act as the berm and have a cul-de-sac under it instead of the spillway, because that's where the cart path is right now.
Well, and then what you'd end up doing, you'd probably end up wanting a guide rail, a wooden guide rail along the top of it, because you'd end up with a 12-foot, probably 15-foot wide, actually, be a 12-foot wide drive, you're going to want at least three foot shoulders on each side, so you're going to be around 18 feet wide. And you're probably going to be dropping about a foot and a half on a three-to-one slope. So you're probably going to want a guide rail on top of that, and then it's going to start changing the entire look of that field, which is one of, one of the whole ideas of this design, and the reason we're going for the relief on the gravel instead of pavement is to try to maintain the rural character that's out there. And now all of a sudden, you stop building this driveway sitting up on top of this causeway, this is going to change that look.
George, may I just make a point on the map, just to familiarize people with the property that.
As an individual.
Yep. And something I just want to point out is that right now, this entire, behind the Kennedys' home and in front of our home, and then all of Mr. True's property currently is open. So it has the appearance currently of being one large open field. So aesthetically, by putting in a road, you're dividing the, the visual appearance of the property regardless of where that road is situated. So I think it's somewhat misleading for folks that haven't seen the property to think that by keeping it close to the property line, there's very little right here right now to demarcate that that isn't part of the property line. So if you're out at the street looking back in, it's just going to look as though there's a road traveling through that space in any event. And I just, I had a quick question for you. You're talking about if the road were to go to the, or the driveway were to go to the north of the property, that you'd be extending it something to the way as wide as 18 feet. The last plans I saw had this depicted as being 20 feet in width, the driveway. Yep. And I don't know if they've changed, but those were the last plans that were provided to me.
Hey, there's a 20-foot wide driveway. 20-foot, yeah. It's supposed to be.
Driveway is what?
20 feet.
20 feet. Well, it could, it can be, you know, it can be whatever, I guess, right? It's driveway.
Minimum width.
Yeah, it's not covered by.
Yeah.
Minimum width is 20 feet on our.
Basically, to address the question, the driveway.
Oh, that's right.
In the parking, in the parking lot.
Yeah, but it's, it's above the minimum, indeed, but.
If it's pointed pressure, our driveway right now is, is, it varies between nine and 11 feet in width. So it would be, the way it's depicted now, it's literally a road going through the field, right down the middle of those three lots, which currently appear as one contiguous piece of property.
Okay, I think what we're going to want to do is go ahead and take a sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Just to see it on the ground.
Yeah, and I think basically to address the question aesthetically, I want to keep the driveway where it is because that's what I like.
Understand what you want, because it has to make sense for everybody.
Well, I really don't understand that. It really has to make sense for everybody, I mean, I'm trying to put my driveway and make it look appropriate. I, this is what I think. And I don't see it really being a negative impact unless it's really in backflow.
I like it the way it is, from two perspectives.
I don't want, I don't want a straight shot, like just right down my property, you know, quarter mile long. I want it to be interesting and meander a little bit. You know, I don't want to come in on the left side and just go straight. That was basically where, where it was.
I like the way it's shown. And I think the, the poor guy that has to cut that hay is going to like a lot more than splitting it up.
John, I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to hate a property any longer because it's not worth it, because you've just divided.
Oh, really? You've lost too much?
We've lost too much because you can't, you can no longer access our property.
Charlie, go to mail?
No, Charlie's, Charlie's in it.
Well, that's not what he's told me.
What did he?
That's not what he's shared with me.
Oh, really?
No, it's news to me.
We used to talk to him, yeah.
He said as long as, you know, we allow him to keep hating, he will, so.
Well, certainly he is cutting into what's available there.
Sure.
And.
Either way, you can be cutting the driveway into, into the amount of hay, you know, whether it's on the right side or left.
You'd like to see it down the middle?
No, I'd like to see it on the north side.
Oh, you want it over here?
Right.
Okay.
And I think, John, that once you come to see the property, you'll have a better understanding of, of our perspective.
Yeah, what's the nature of the, you know, from the house to the north back, what's that look like? Is that just open field?
I, from my house, everybody would draw a bowl of hay field, not driveway.
We feel the same way.
I know you do, of course. I just, I don't believe it's a change I'm willing to make, as I'm saying, on my, on my own personal kind of.
Well, let's read the sidewalk. And I think we'll see it on the ground. See the sidewalk.
I, I just don't think that there's anything that, if I'm wrong, the planning board can dictate where my driveway goes, as long as I'm in, within your requirements. You know, a sidewalk to potentially see where my driveway will go in the end, I don't think there's any merit to it.
A sidewalk?
Well, not.
Take it on a subdivision anyways.
Yeah, we could do that, but when it comes to the portion of the driveway, I really don't think, I don't see it. We're trying to stay on the high side of the field instead of the white side. Stormwater management wise, this is why we addressed it, and we could keep our driveway at grade instead of being built up now.
Now, how long is the driveway?
It's long, so it's costly as well to build it up instead of remaining at grade. The high side of the field, we just, you don't have to build it way up, we just stay where roughly it is.
I understand that. Earlier, you mentioned several waivers, I don't ever want the gravel.
Yeah, what I'll do is, what I'll do is I'll go through the waiver list with the board. So first, waiver request is under the environmental analysis. In your regulations, it's required, however, you are allowed to ask for relief for five lots or less. So we are requesting relief from the environmental analysis based on that requirement. The second is under the table of general layout and dimensions, you know, surface is gravel instead of pavement, so that's a waiver request. We don't have any sidewalks, there's really no need for it, it would be a private way. And the right of way is 40 feet wide instead of 53. So we're requesting relief from those dimensional criteria. The proposed cul-de-sac, as we all already discussed, is 140-foot diameter for the cul-de-sac and the pavement width diameter is 126, and the pavement width is 25. Under your regulations, cul-de-sac diameter is 165, pavement radius is 140, and pavement width is 25. So pavement width isn't relief, but the cul-de-sac radius and the outside pavement radius is. And again, we did discuss with the fire chief, and the proposed cul-de-sac at 140, he was all set with.
Well, our rights are based on what the fire department in the past has wanted to see. So if it's okay with Dana's, I would think it'll be okay with us.
Okay. One of the other criteria is fire protection, require a 20,000 gallon underground water tank, and area is served by Newbury Water Department of the Byfield Water District. Neither of those services this property. So what we did is we did speak to the fire chief, and we talked about putting alarm on the two new dwellings so that it would notify, directly notify fire department if there was an issue, and the chief was fine with that. It sounds like that's been done in the past.
Actually, what he said to me was not, there is no tie, direct tie-in to the fire department, but that it would be monitored, so like an Xfinity system or something like that, I think. But no.
A and B are one of those guys, yeah.
The last waiver request was with regards to the radius, the return radiuses or of the street. And again, the reason for this request is because of the existing curb cut. Your regulations require a 30-foot radius return coming out to the main road. We do meet that on one side, we don't meet it on the other. And again, the reason for this is because of the way the existing curb cut is. To meet that radius, you'd have to push this whole cul-de-sac further out, and then indeed away from where that curb cut was. And that curb cut design was actually based on where Mass DOT wanted it, not the property owner at the time. So it was really driven by Mass DOT, that curb cut location. So those would be the waivers requested under the subdivision regulations. We do have one waiver that we'd be requesting under the stormwater regulations that I'm sure you'll be looking for, your engineers comment on. And the reason for that, for the requested relief is that, under your regulations, you're dealing with predeveloped condition. They want you to treat predeveloped condition as wood's good condition, no matter what the cover is. So what you've got is you've got this big field here, and under the regulations, they're saying, they want you to call it out as wood's good. What that'll do is that results in less flow during your predeveloped condition. And we're fine to design with that. The reason we didn't is, so this property drains from High Road, exits the site roughly about right here, everything drains across this way, this eventually drains out to a channel that eventually flows down into a well. So when you look at this from an engineering standpoint and you say, all right, I'm going to artificially create the runoff leaving the site to be actually less than what it currently is, which means when you go to your post-developed condition, you actually have to mitigate and hold back more runoff, which in turn is actually causing less runoff to leave the site than what currently is leaving. And what that could cause is you could have an impact on that wetland downstream. So what we're asking is that we actually treat the surface as it is in the precondition, and we model it that way, and that's how we did the stormwater analysis. Under your regulations, you are required to use the larger coronel numbers, so the drainage analysis is actually used, is performed using the larger rainfall numbers anyway. So you do have that cushion built into the drainage calculations right off the bat. But again, we feel that by modeling it as wood's good and then mitigating for that, you're actually going to have less runoff heading off towards that resource area, which may or may not have a negative impact on that resource area.
Any questions, Sean? George?
That wood's good thing, I believe came from the stormwater handbook, or the handbook for Conservation Commissioners, I can't remember which, in which DOP defined that, as I recall, that that will be the appropriate way to go. You make a good argument, as far as I'm concerned, relative to drying something up. I don't think we want to see that happen.
Right.
Now, are we at, you're not coming before the con comes?
No, there's no, as you can see, the wetland resource areas are way out back.
Yeah.
The roadway itself has no work within the buffer zone, and I don't even believe the proposed lot development, we haven't prepared any site plans yet, but that proposed lot development, I believe, is outside the 100-foot buffer as well.
Okay, now you are, you are draining back, you're draining towards that wetland in the rear, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, right in here, you will have runoff heading back towards that resource area.
Yeah.
The high point is roughly right in this location, so all this goes this way and then out, and then everything from back here heads back down.
Well, you were, you were making gestures like this.
Yeah, it doesn't, what it does is it flows down, out, and then heads this way. It doesn't make its way back down.
Okay, it goes, it goes to another swamp.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
You may get a little bit of the flow kicking back, but it's so flat in here, you could get some heading back in this.
I remember when, when Mrs. York had that long cul-de-sac suggestion, it was rather sloppy along here. Am I, is this?
Yeah, that's her property, that's York right there.
Yeah, right, okay, so this is it, yeah, it goes back to, I forget how far back, probably to back here somewhere. I remember it being pretty, pretty wet on her side of the stone wall.
Yeah, they actually, they didn't have any wetlands back there when they flagged it. There is a Zone A flood plain that kind of runs right through here, but it's all back in this area. They did have boarding vegetated, tated wetlands way off the back of the property, and then we had this one that creeped out. That's the 100-foot buffer, so all the proposal work is outside the commission jurisdiction.
Yeah. And you're submitting your, your stormwater caps that show the various areas, right?
Correct. Yeah, but the lot developments were included in the stormwater calculations.
This is a public here, so if anyone has any questions. Fred, you have anything?
Yeah, I do.
You want a microphone?
Uh, no, I'm putting in a mic, I'd like to see the plan first, first page.
Fred, can you give your address, please?
Fred, you had to.
Oh, yeah, 26th Mountain, right through. I'm sorry. What is, what is this?
That's property line.
Piece of land here.
That's part of lot three.
So this doesn't close on.
No, you can see it better on the.
The Southwood's both useful crushes.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm used to, I'm used to bylaws that have laws against reserve strips. And I looked in, in Newbury's, and I didn't see any provision against a reserve strip, but that's what that is, is a reserve strip, which in most, in most communities is, is not a law. But if it's allowed, it is nothing, nothing I can do about it. That is number one. Number two, I, I kind of represent the, the master plan committee. And the master plan committee has made a purchase, as maybe some of you would remember, to try to preserve the agricultural and rural character of, of High Road. And this seems to destroy it. This plan seems to destroy it. He's, he's building a house way back, I don't understand why anybody would want to build a house way back there. I just don't understand. And it destroys that whole field by putting this, this driveway across it. I mean, you can't control where the driveway goes, but I'm just, I don't understand why he would want to do that. I would think he'd want to look out his back door, look out across his field, but you're not going to do that.
You're clearly not a misogynist, I can think of 20 reasons why I'd like to live back there.
Really?
You're an absolute.
It doesn't have a view.
That doesn't matter.
That's because you live in High Road.
Yeah, true folks do.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, but I, I just, I just couldn't understand.
If I lived where you would, I would feel so strongly about it.
Yeah.
I grew up in the woods.
Mine, yeah, yeah. And is that in the woods where that house is?
Yeah.
It's not in the field.
No, back in the woods there.
Where's the edge of the woods? If he had a driveway like mine, they could mow it over.
The edge of the woods is.
This is your, your line here.
Well, this is the proposed line, so there's, there's a missing line technically through here.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the existing conditions.
I mean, it's not, it's not in my business where he, where he builds the house.
The proposed house is right above here.
It just destroys the view.
Here's the tree line, right there, so the closed house is right in here. So he's technically back in.
But it is contrary to what, what the master plan committee was, was trying to, trying to do with High Road, and that's the only point I wanted to, wanted to make with that.
Thank you, George.
I have comments to George and Mr. Morinstone for a question.
Were you, see you done yet?
Yes.
Elizabeth Mitchell, 257. High Road. And as Fred just noted, what really drew me and my family to Newbury and to the area in general is the peace, the tranquility, the open space, and the privacy, not only to Newbury, but certainly for this piece of property as well. You can see where we're situated, we're well off the road, and those attributes were very important to us in moving here. And unfortunately, despite Adam's desire to create that for himself, by doing so and dividing the property as he is proposing, it really does negatively impact those attributes for us and really will substantially decrease the use and enjoyment of our property. And I certainly think that the Kennedys will be also negatively impacted. And I do want to note for the record that the changes to the road and the situation of the cul-de-sac were implemented just, it sounds like, today, and my best guess is that they are not aware of that and are not present here to share their views on it. As I have noted to both this board and also the Board of Selectmen previously, is that this proposed subdivision, for, for adding two lots to town, unfortunately, probably the way the proposal is now, puts the highest burden possible on the two existing homes that are there. And I think that's, Mr. True thinks that, it seems to think that as long as he gets his driveway in the things where he wants them, that certain things can't be regulated by this board, but I would like to urge the board to use their common sense and to approve a subdivision that not only fits in with the keeping of the environment and the town, but also minimizes the burden to the direct abutters. Mr. Moran talked a lot about how the property was going to be divided. I wanted to start a little bit by talking about the current and the proposed use of Lot One, which is the barn. It had been a residence with Mr. Hurley, and then since his death and since Adam's acquisition of the property, he, my understanding is that he has been renting the apartment and using the, the barn as his shop, and also the surrounding property in, in that regard. And if you've had an opportunity, and since he's acquired the property, he's built what appears to be a greenhouse on the southern part of this, this jog here. If you've had the opportunity to see the property in the last four to six months, it appears as though it's functioning essentially as a contractor's yard. There's a lot of debris, there's been a lot of fill that's been brought in, and other materials from offsite, and has been, is being unceremoniously stockpiled there. I have questions, I have not spoken to the building inspector about this, but I do have questions about the current and proposed use, given that it's not currently owner-occupied, as to whether it is permissible for this type of use. I also have concerns about offsite fill being brought in and dumped. I don't know whether it has been tested, but I don't know whether it's clean, but I do have concerns that other things are being brought in. There's been, they're, they're open, there's, there's water filtrating through it, it's not near our well at the moment, but it certainly is, is closer to the Kennedys. So I do have questions about that, and I urge the board to explore those things. And that's not to mention how unappealing it is to look at. You talked about wanting to look, look at your front door.
It's temporary, I believe.
And, well, it's been six months, but I.
Because we don't have a ton of money to do anything with it right now.
I appreciate that, Lauren, I'm sharing my views, you'll have an opportunity to share yours as well.
I'm listening.
It's difficult for us as we live there.
To look at it.
That you are, have been on site for six months, and this is what we're experiencing. So I have strong concerns as to whether this is a precursor as to how you plan to continue to maintain the property. But I will tell you that for the last six months or so, every time I open my front door or drive up and down my driveway, it's aesthetically unpleasing. And I, I have similar concerns. If the project is approved in any way, shape, or form, that, that type of treatment of the property will continue on backwards through the, through the latter part of the property. I had noted previously that currently the, we've been referring to it as a driveway, based off 20 feet, I think it's more appropriately described as a road. It's currently staked, my understanding is that those stakes represent the midline of the road. When you look at it, it appears to be very close. When you look at it, it appears to be very close to, um, the property. The last time Mr. True presented to this board, he represented that the closest point of the road was 30 feet from our property line as that point in time. The board suggested that Mr. True try to pull it off the property line. Um, it has in fact moved, but unfortunately it's moved closer to our property as opposed to further away. In looking at it, I know there's been some discussion about headlights. And when you're at our house, when you look at the line, this, this, the way it comes off the cul-de-sac points directly in the front of our home. Um, and then again, as I've been talking about it, hugs the property line. Um, we had talked previously about trying to pull it off the house, off the property line sooner, before it hits the house. Um, certainly it's difficult for me to tell with the different drawings, but again, I don't think that, that has happened. And if you're standing in our driveway, it's very, very close. Um, so I, I think I've made the point, I'll, I'll say it here again. I would really like to see it moved to the northern side of the property. Um, I don't think that, um, in terms of my conversations with Charlie Colby, he had indicated me, he contacted me earlier in the summer to find out if, because he also haved our property. He had contacted me to find out if it was still okay for him to have our property, because if it wasn't, he wasn't interested in haying any longer. It wasn't a large enough tract. Um, I think by dividing the property, it shuts this piece off. And I suspect he will no longer be interested in haying it. Doesn't mean he won't find somebody else to hae it, but I think, I do think that, as Fred has observed too, that this really divides the property and I think that it's, it's, I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that the current use and treatment of the property continues, not to mention that you're taking out approximately an acre of what's currently haved now. Um, so what's hatable will be significantly reduced. Um, there's been some discussion about screening. Um, I have seen, um, a plan for screening. Um, I think it's woefully insufficient. Um, there's some trees here, ostensibly to block headlights. Um, I, I don't, I don't think it's sufficient to do that. Um, and there was some discussion about adding some things here. Um, we have since actually put in some plantings in anticipation, um, which I think are far more, um, likely to help with that screening. Um, again, if, if the project is approved, I would like the opportunity to propose some additional screenings and plantings, um, that are far more significant than, than what currently is proposed. Um, I agree that I think a gravel driveway is, or road is far more aesthetically pleasing than something paved, but that's if you're looking at it and driving over it to get to your own home. Um, I know from experience, because we deal with the gravel, it's very noisy and it's very dirty. Um, and you're talking about putting in a very large, wide stretch of very long road, as you noted. Um, and unfortunately, I oppose the, the gravel nature of it for, for just those reasons. Is, is the, again, the noise and the, um, and, and the dirt. Another point I wanted to make is that, um, again, from experience, uh, the snow comes across this field and accumulates in ways that is sometimes unimaginable. Um, I cannot tell you the number of times that a plow is not sufficient and that we've needed large, heavy equipment. Um, so you can see cars out of the road, but it'll be two or three days before, um, we have access. Uh, and again, I'm very concerned about the proximity of the road to our home and our property line, given how some, the snow treatment and snow removal, you really do need to push it way off to the side in preparation for, um, future storms. Um, Arwell is here, roughly here, I think. Um, I don't know enough about this, John, you may, but I do have concerns about the proximity to the road to the well. I don't know frankly if that's an issue, but, but I did want to raise it for, for something to consider. Um, I had raised this previously, um, and I think that the structures that are going towards the back of Mr. True's property, the ones he envisions for his own use, um, that he has represented, that they was intended for, only for residential use. Um, I would be interested, if possible, to include something in, if approval is, is granted, the, noting that it is for residential use only and not intended for, uh, commercial use. Similarly, um, Mr. True has indicated in the past that he was interested and willing to put portions of the property into a conservation restriction. I would like to learn more about what you have in mind for that and what's contemplated, um, because I think different things have been said at different points in time. Um, and I want to make sure everybody's on the same page and, and the plan going forward is clear. Uh, this, I think, has also come up before, uh, but again, if approval is granted, that a restriction be in place that the property cannot be further subdivided. I think I have similar concerns with Fred, as there's a tremendous amount of frontage for the larger tract of property and I would hope that it could not be further subdivided. Something else I think I mentioned is that, uh, the, the original pieces, or the, the lots, what I'll refer to as, as though, um, I think this is different than, in, in any event, the, the Kennedy's property, our property, and the Smalls' property, uh, when divided from Mr. Hurley's property, the larger, the larger piece here that's under discussion now, restrictive covenants have been put in place. Um, and unfortunately, uh, by adding three additional lots now rather than just one that was maintained by Mr. Hurley, I do have some concerns about, um, you know, there's been reference to treating this as a neighborhood. And I think that it would go a long way, um, for creating a neighborhood-like environment if these properties were restricted similarly. Um, I know that Mr. True has indicated there's a couple of, uh, covenants within those restrictions that he is not amenable to. Um, but I would like to propose that, uh, the lots all be treated similarly, whether those restrictive covenants currently exist be adopted onto lots 1, 2, and 3, or that the, all of the lot owners collectively sit down and renegotiate, um, what those restrictive covenants are so that the properties can be maintained similarly.
So this, I didn't understand. You say they exist now, that there's covenants?
So when Mr. Hurley, Mr. Hurley owned all of this. And when he divided it, he put restrictive covenants on this property, this property, and this property, but not his own property. Um, and they are, they vary. Uh, I mean, some of them are no chain link fences, some of them are the use of no ATVs, which I think is one that Mr. True is, is not comfortable with. Uh, there's not a lot of them, um, but it's, it's that type of thing that I, I would like. And, and again, I, I think this came up last time, is that, um, Mr. True can make all the representations in the world, but his plan is to sell this piece of property. And at that point, it becomes more difficult, um, to maintain some level of uniformity and agreement among people. So I think it would be best to try to do that in advance, um, to the extent possible. The other piece that I do have some concerns about is that I understand that, um, and I understand why, but Mr. True plans to phase construction. So if I have this right, that he plans to complete the, the home on Lot 2, perhaps sell it, um, before he begins construction on his own home on Lot 3. Um, living here, I'm concerned about the potential for a very long and protracted construction period where there'd be multiple homes built and constructed, and once complete, you move on to the second phase. So I would like some discussion and thought given to, um, putting some restrictions on time periods in terms of, I, I don't know exactly how that would look, but I think it's something that we can talk about, whether certain, whether the whole project needs to be completed within a certain period of time, or whether each phase needs to be completed within X months of breaking ground. But something that would, uh, give the abutters peace of mind that this was not a construction project over different phases that was going to last for multiple years. Um, I appreciate the board's willingness to conduct a site visit because I do think it's important. I don't think the lot lines really, um, show what the impact will be. And I think I've said everything that is top of mind at the moment. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about the property or our thoughts on it.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
You know what, I'd like to do is just comment about the well. Uh, the well proximity, again, I driveway is 25 feet off the lot line. There is no required setback from a well to a driveway. And the fact that we actually have a 25-foot buffer, I don't know how close your well is to the property line, but right off the bat, you got a 25-foot buffer even if your well is right on the lot line. So there's no setback for that.
I'd love a chance to rebut some of the comments, if pleased here. Um, so, and I understand Elizabeth Mitchell's, uh, concerns here, but I'm also moving here for the same thing that she stated is what she wants, is, you know, a nice, open front yard and, and basically kind of the same thing she's got here. So, um, you know, what she's looking to preserve is what I'm looking to have. Um, you know, so, but this was not here at one point and now she has it. So it's, it's kind of a catch 22 there, you know, in my opinion. But, you know, this is what I'm looking to do and I do have large dirt piles. They're mostly fill piles for my road. And this road continuing out, which is large rubble from a project in Newburyport that I'm doing. It's all the same material, sand, large gravel stones from a household. Uh, so that would be used for the road base.
There's no debris in there?
No, there's no debris. I have a dumpster on site, uh, because there was debris in one of the, one of the piles and we sorted through it and the dumpster is still there. That's just partially because I'm cleaning out the barn still. Um, and Mr. Hurley left a whole bunch of stuff for us.
Because the fill is all clean fill.
It's clean fill, clean fill, yeah. And there's also a pile alone on the, on the other side there. Uh, again, for using the house lots in the end, stripped alone from the same site from Newburyport. Um, and I've, I've always proposed this house lot here be broken off and sold. I never misrepresented that, that's exactly my intentions. Um, and we basically, you know, we're looking to, to do this all in this fashion too. A lot of this to save money so that we can do it, do what we like, you know? So our, our driveway's over here, it's more expensive. We're, we're trying to cut costs where we can, essentially. And trying to preserve a look, a nice look for us. And, and Elizabeth Small and John Kennedy and I thought Elizabeth, at one point, everybody was on board with, with what we were doing, working a lot together, uh, with the screen. Can I see that? So, as we had before, it looked like pretty adequate screen to move. So it's changed a little bit here because of the road being changed at the last minute, which I understand is going to have to be looked at and absorbed. So, um, a few changes that have been made is this front property here has got a buffer that goes all the way across, um, from, from, from the barn and the greenhouse and the driveway here, this, this is 100% buffered. Trees are all, are all itemmed, exactly what the screening is and what, what they are. I know our five is a practice rubber, it's red oak, and, um, so on. Uh, the greenhouse structure that's here will no longer currently be there. That's going to be dismantled and used later on down towards our property, um, for our own use. So, and this is, this is the buffer here. As you come in, there's a buffer for the Kennedys, which I discussed with them, to mitigate driveways. So headlights will go right there. So you got a tight cluster here. As you come in here, your headlights point to here and here. And then they turn back and screen him. Uh, then we come down the road. Scott Cameron, who's not here tonight, but he used a line of sight from Elizabeth's home to here to, to propose this, so that as you come in, there's no way to get headlights once you turn past that.
Can I just ask a question about that? Because I don't understand that, because as I look at that, it, it looks to me like, I mean, it screens from here, right? I mean, in order to screen appropriately for like this, you're here, you got headlights going this way, right up to my house.
Right, with the plantings that are here, which are added.
But I don't think you can screen for headlights unless you're planting actually on our property. And, and I realize that you don't have control over that, but I think it's.
Well, if you just planted this whole roadside, then yes.
Right.
So there's a point at which we use, we use the line, a line of sight with a car. And this is how we developed this. And that's, you know, but if you take a line from here to there, these trees cut that off and this tree cuts that off. And there's no actual visible headlight path. You're also 400, 500 yards away. Um, also, I'd like to point out that the Miss Mitchell's property line comes up to a small Christmas tree or Fraser fir or something. We have a blue spruce back here. So when you're at the site visit, you can see the majority of the trees that Miss Mitchell owns or believes she owns, she does nothing. She made plantings in the back this spring on our property by 12 to 14 feet.
Wow.
All across. So you came on, you planted trees on my property.
That's not entirely accurate. But there are trees that are over the property line.
You planted this this spring.
No, that's not accurate. That's inaccurate.
You're saying you didn't plant the trees in the back this spring, which you.
We did not plant trees this spring. We planted.
Yes, you did.
They're, they're in a straight line.
You, you planted, we could clearly tell by the.
So.
You're talking up in the back corner.
We have planted trees.
What about up here?
I'll get there in a second. We have just recently planted trees right here.
To screen, so can those be included?
Well, that's why we're doing it, because this is, this is, is too close for comfort for us. Um, in the back, well, first of all, anything that is here, anything that is, well, I think probably, it doesn't, it doesn't show, I don't know that.
It doesn't show.
It doesn't show. So, and there's a number of plantings that are all through here, most of which were present when we moved on to the property. We had discussions with Mr. Hurley when we moved into the property, deceased Mr. Hurley, as to where the property line was, because it was very, it was very unclear, because a lot of this had been haved and not, not well maintained. So we functioned off the, the tree that was here and worked with him to identify a point in the back. And we worked off a straight line. So last fall, when it first became apparent that the son, Mr. Hurley, was going to sell the property, we got concerned and we put some plantings in back here at the time.
Which are on the property.
They are. At the time, we thought they were on our property.
Regardless of where they are.
They went in last fall, certainly before you owned the property.
They did not. They went in after we owned the property.
Well, we can discuss, that's, that's absolutely not accurate.
I watched them go in this year. I know why you're lying right now, everybody.
Okay.
It's not going to make you look.
That's so unproductive. And I actually have receipts to demonstrate when the trees were purchased. And from a number, from.
In other direction, the plants were planted on.
And Adam, is your point?
I should have been concerned with where they were.
We thought they were on the property.
Okay.
We thought they were on our property.
But you know that you cut this line every year, which goes from the Christmas tree to there in a straight line. And also, you, all, all these plants are on my property.
Okay, Adam.
So we need to be neighborly here, understand that.
We do, Adam.
We're trying to say, let's do the right thing to look nice.
You told me that these trees.
You never said anything about this ambush that you pretty much brought.
I'm not ambushing. Adam, you've told me a number of times.
You basically said we were all doing it the whole time.
I've never said that. You've never bothered to ask me. You've told me a number of different times what your plans were without once asking as to what.
No, I haven't, I haven't.
I'm going to let the chairman take over because I don't think this is a productive use of anybody's time.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I think you have to understand that this is our property and I don't care what you do with your property. We're not going to have chain link fence, boats. The front of the property is ugly, I agree. It's temporary, believe me. The barn's going to be, you have a new look. Everything's going to be landscaped accordingly. And the house is probably going to be beautiful that you have to stare at, which I know is unfortunate, but it's our property. And we have to live next to you and you have to live next to us. And we have to live next to the Kennedys. And I'm not going to be able to sleep at night if we're not all going to be able to get along.
I appreciate that and I hope.
And I'm sure Adam is heated and feels the same way. But this has been.
It feels like an ambush. I, I was given the impression that this was not the case.
It just.
That's how it is.
I think he feels like you were on board and now.
Never said.
It's just kidding, I'm not on board. But again, we have to be neighbors, but it's our property. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I certainly understand what you're saying.
Because I, and I understand.
We live next.
The driveway is, I know you guys have done a ton of work on this, but I don't love it. I wish we could do a little tiny driveway down the side. I wish we could do a little tiny driveway down the side of the field, just like your driveway. And I'll be honest, when I saw those plans, I was shocked.
I guess I have questions about why you can't, and that may be a discussion for a different time.
I'm sure Mr. Moran can answer that, but I don't know.
It was supposed to be changed. It is supposed to be smaller. I don't want a 20-foot driveway, and I've said that several times.
I think that's a little wide.
Yeah.
And I think that...
It's just going to cost more money to build, and you take it every...
Everything, it's going to just...
For the record, I am more than willing to work with you, but frankly, I don't feel like you have worked with us, because the several things that we have discussed, reducing the driveway, moving the driveway further off the property line, changing the angle, those were all points that we raised, but those were not addressed. So it needs to be a two-way street.
Right, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think we're...
But we also never said 30 feet.
Hold on, hold on. I think that we are unable to move it to the left, the north side of the property, right, because of its low land, correct?
Correct.
What I heard say, Adam say, and I think Mr. Moran, is that it's not, that it's not feasible, it's more expensive, and you would prefer to spend your money in other ways.
I agree. I mean, I wish...
And aesthetically, we like...
We had more money to do that, but...
You know, which is the same thing that you're after, the look of, log here, front doors, what I want too. So we both want the same thing, and it's, you certainly can't say that one person can have it, the other person can't, you know?
No, but I think you can work towards it without destroying what's already present.
I don't think we're destroying it, though. You do, you think it's being destroyed?
I thought we were doing the better-looking thing for the property, shooting straight back. And we did work to bend the road, you know, come in this way and then bend the road back out, which is not on this one, and then back in gently so it doesn't, so the headlights would actually get away and then come back. And 20, 30 feet was, was never mentioned as the closest point. I thought it was, it was shown as 20 at one point, and we went to 25.
At the last, when you came to present the idea, the plans to the planning board, I had inquired, and you had indicated...
Right.
That it was, the closest point was 30.
And it was not shown, no, I was wrong. I was definitely wrong.
I understand that, but all, my point was...
It was 20 at the time, we increased it to 25.
The feedback was, try to get it further than 30.
What, we just basically, we don't want to go further than 30, part of it too. We, 25, we thought would be enough, and I don't know by the, what the town's rules are, how close you can be, but we're certainly past, way past the minimum. It's got to be, what, 10 feet? I don't even, I don't know.
Any more comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave. This has got nothing to do with them, but I believe that the subdivision regulations are lacking in not addressing reserve strips.
Yes.
Because what can happen, just, just using this one as an example of, you don't have it up there, but this other, but what can happen is, with, with no access from this property to this road, this person may want to develop, and he may put in another road right beside this. We'll have two roads in town, but we should have only had one. So I think we should not allow reserve strips, and that way...
Reserve strip is what, just the various...
Reserve strip is, and that's a piece of land here that separates this road from the abutis and prevents the abutis from having any access to the road.
You can just call that part of the right of way, and then you're good.
Yeah, right.
You know, it doesn't have to be a...
Exactly, but what is apt to cause is a lot of roads, which you don't really want here.
I, I see another issue too, and that is, it may not be the case here, but in some cases, that would be never maintained.
Yeah, oh yeah, that is what happens. It has to be a wild rose jungle, yeah.
Milkweed and children.
But I think you should have dressed that...
They have a couple more here for comments I forgot to address. Preservation, yes, so our lot, Elizabeth raised the concern, so we will have a restriction to never further subdivide this. It's got a lot of frontage, as we said, but so there'd be a deed restriction to never further subdivide this parcel, and it won't be allowed access for anything else. Mr. Kennedy, at one point, it were, we probably agree at some point to take this piece of land here, and here will become his, because it doesn't make any sense for it to be mine, and it will make his lot better. So he's, at some point, may trade the exact acreage that's here for this piece here, which bugs us, or dollar-for-dollar sale, something along those lines. But that's to, you know, eventually to say, same thing, it would be possible to get in there and cut it and whatever else.
So if you take that up, give it to somebody else?
Yeah, so it comes right to the corner, and from this point, the circle around, we have the 125 still. Right now, it's currently long, whatever it is, but we placed the restriction on it before anything would happen so that it's clear, and there would be no subdivide. I think that was it.
Anything else, anybody?
I've got, well, I've got the comments from the fire chief, which have already been addressed, and that came in an email today following the meeting that I had with them yesterday, so I'll just mention that for the record. And also the letter dated October 3rd from the Historical Commission, which mentions their hope that the barn on High Road will be maintained, especially with respect to the front, and they had made a motion in January as follows. Historical Commission would like the barn to be preserved as part of our meeting with the Trus. The original design was from 1728. Current barn is a replica built circa 1900 for painting property sheets. I think they were going to...
It's being preserved, it's being preserved, yes.
There's a preservation restriction on the barn structure.
Has that been placed, or are you planning on doing it?
Uh, it has not been placed, but those two documents will be gotten together. I didn't know, I didn't, my lawyer said something about it having to happen once it's, the parcels are subdivided? I don't know.
I'll have to check it.
Not the barn, but that one.
Yeah, you don't want it to run with the land.
The barn will, yeah, exactly.
So you'd have to cut it off.
So when do we want to go out and have a look?
When are you available, Tru?
I haven't been training. I haven't been breaking up.
Martha will take care of her, and I'll take a look.
Martha, when do you do your disappearing act?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Oh, yeah.
She's going with an empty suitcase.
So, but I, and I don't know if you want to try to find a time that John Weiss might be able to go out as well.
That would be nice to be counted, even if we have to drive her around the fields. You'd get from a ship at that, wouldn't you?
Sure.
Yeah. Because the ATV.
Got a ATV and all.
If it's not next week, but you won't be, I guess, because Martha won't be here, I'm pretty good. I just kind of plan one week ahead.
I am good next two or three weeks.
We're not, are we talking next week or the week after?
Next week, and that was a what?
I know, we could do it. That would be, you'll have sex alike.
Yeah, we could.
I, I don't know when I'm available next week, but I'm not available very much, I know.
Okay.
I'd rather do it the following week.
Does it mess anybody up particularly?
The only thing we're trying to do is to get to the...
When's the next meeting?
Before the next meeting, so next week.
First Wednesday of the month.
Right, I mean, the next scheduled meeting is...
I went, yeah.
Is the second.
Second early, so this is the 19th, next, yeah, we'd be just barely, that is the week, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it has to be that Monday or two.
Yeah.
It's either Halloween or Monday.
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
But it could be a Saturday also.
Yeah. Martha won't be back until, what, Tuesday?
Well, I'll be back in the office on Tuesday.
Yeah.
But again, you could, you guys could go without me if you wouldn't mind having you go out on the property separately. I'd like to be, you know, be there to hear whatever is said.
Well, if we said the 29th, that gets us ahead of time of the meeting, and you could be there perhaps.
No, I'm not back yet.
You're on vacation, aren't you?
It's really a week.
Yeah, right. How about we do it the second?
Yeah, do it the second.
During the day.
I don't think Martha needs a site visit the first day back after a week away. That usually is a pretty exciting day. Oh my God, Dave.
What do we plan for the morning of the second? Let's pick a time, eight to nine o'clock?
It's up to you.
Nine, I don't know the second.
Nine o'clock.
That works pretty well.
Bring the coffee.
Bring the coffee.
Martha, we got all this stuff online, right? Do we have...
Yeah, actually, there's, it's all on Dropbox. So I can send you the link to Dropbox, and then you can access the files. It's not as bad as it sounds.
I have no idea, I have no idea what you're talking about.
What we have here, it was just a pretty different...
That's all the new stuff, so that includes all the revisions to the plan.
Right.
You just need one of the full-size ones to load.
You could just email with me the damn thing, just by the normal, normal email, like real people, no Dropboxes or...
The only issue, the reason why you use Dropbox is because a lot of times the data is just too big, so what happens is, if you have a restriction of a T-monet data that you can get through your email, you won't be able to load it. That's the, we can try.
I, I get subdivision stuff generally...
All right.
Without any great deal of problem. Not, I don't remember having a problem drawing, a normal civil drawing.
Well, it depends on the size. What you could do is, is just send John an email, let him know it's coming, and then if he doesn't get it, he can, or, or they can just send it, and if he didn't get it...
Well, would the email bounce, or just add enclosure?
Um, problem is sometimes we don't get a kickback, it's just when, when you try to open it, it just won't open.
You mean the, the whole email, or just the enclosure?
The whole email.
Whole email?
Sometimes we'll actually get a notification back saying that it wasn't delivered. So if that happens, then we can just call you.
Okay. We want to continue us to...
Yes, and then...
What time's our, do we already fill 7:15?
No, we've got ERA in December, December 7th.
I still use a Razor Shields.
We can do November 2.
Do you even know what they are?
Yeah, actually, I just looked at your card, I worked at Tom Navy.
Was it, yeah, oh yeah.
I used to work with you.
Yeah, we worked together before, way, way back, yeah. Yeah, I had asked, somebody had posed a question, I didn't, it's been so long, I don't know if we just talked about...
I don't think we have that.
We're going to try to adjourn here.
I'm sorry, continue.
You want me to motion?
I have to do everything around here. It's more to adjourn.
We need to, I motion to, that we continue this hearing to November 2nd.
That's it. John, second. Jackson, hold for a second.
Hi.
We're closed, right? Where is Tom Lee today? Now, where's Tom? He's going to Florida, what, anybody else?
Actually, he lives in...
He already do a term.
But he does go down to Florida, I think he's already passed it now.
Now, his wife was in the real estate business, she's still, or she retired?
They actually got divorced.
Oh, did they?
No, but she's still doing real estate, so... But you're exactly right, I mean, you never met each other.
I did, but they kind of had, it's like, I saw you, you went to the... There's a reason for it.
Right, you knew the name.
Yeah, we just did, oh, I remember the name.
John?